Good evening. Since it is season premiere night, the panel comes on at eight o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get this started. I've been told that I'm a few minutes late, so I'd like to welcome you to the Chamber of Commerce of Harrison County's First Town in Corden, Town Council Candidates Forum. I'm Lisa Lam, the President of the Chamber of Commerce, and I will be your moderator this evening. Thank you, and thanks to our candidates for joining us, as we hope to provide valuable information to our Corden voters who will be voting in this election on Tuesday, November 3rd. If you have not yet registered to vote, you can do so until Monday, October 5th. We have voter registration forms out on the table in the front of the auditorium. If you're not already aware, as a qualified registered voter in Corden, you will be able to vote for one town council member for each of the five council wards. So you won't just be voting for your ward, you will be voting for one representative for each of the wards. This evening, each of our candidates will have three minutes, in alphabetical order by last name, to introduce themselves. Following their introductions, each candidate will have up to sixty seconds to answer ten questions, which will be submitted via the Chamber of Commerce of Harrison County Board of Directors, the Economic Development Corporation, the Corden Hometown Collaboration Initiative, and Main Street Corden. Although audience questions will not be addressed during the forum, I'm sure the candidates will all have their respectful thoughts sometime after. Please keep in mind that not everyone enjoys or is comfortable speaking in public to large crowds. It takes a great deal of courage for our candidates to be here this evening, and we thank them for their time. In the interest of time, and out of respect for each of our candidates, there will be no auditory outbursts, including but not limited to clapping, cheering, or booing. Such an outburst will result in your removal from the building. Now, we're going to allow our candidates to introduce themselves, starting with Shawn Davis.
Thanks, Susan, again. Thank you all for taking the time to come out and listen to what we have to share. My name is Shawn Davis, I'm running in Ward Four. And I'll just tell you a little bit about myself. I was born and raised here in Indiana. My wife Penny and I have been married for about thirty-one years, and we have two kiddos. Our daughter's thirty-six, our thirty-five son is twenty-six years old. We have four grandkids, fourteen, four, and we have two identical twin grandsons, or two and a half. I pastor a church here in town, a local church. I'm the Director, also Graves against Samaritan Center, just opened in May. On board of directors for a great dorm ministry since the U.S. Ministry to Cuba for missionaries. I'm on the Corden Hometown Collaborative Initiative Committee, and also the Corden Competency Plan Committee. A member of the Heart Community Society, and I'm a recent participant in Harrison County, Leadership Harrison County, and a volunteer in living on the Corden. Prior to moving here to Corden, I owned my own computer repair company for about ten years, in my spare time. I actually had a full-time job as a Senior Performance Consultant for HDR, it's Architecture Engineering Consulting Firm. But my formal office is at Louisville, and I work out of my home here in Corden. As you say, our family is invested in this community. We call this home, and we love Corden. We thank God every day for bringing us here, and we really look forward to everything that is in store for our community, and that's the great things in the plan, and we're looking forward to getting some of those things done. Thank you again for being here this evening.
Thank you for being here. I'm Judy Kennedy, and I'm running as an incumbent for the fifth ward. I also serve on the Corden Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a requirement that two members of the Town Council serve on the committee. I have been a member of the Corden Church Christ since its beginning. It is an honor to serve the citizens of Corden as a member of the Town Council. A most memorable moment was the approval of building the wells at Lockport, so that the town would be assured of sufficient water supply. Thank you for your trust and your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank everybody for coming. I'm John Kenner. Mr. John Day, everybody call me. I'll tell you now, I'm not a public figure, so I'm gonna be reading a lot about what I do. I am President of the Town Council, President. I've been married to my wife Penny for forty-eight years. We have two children, a daughter and a son. Our son's twenty-one years old, he's in the military, retired. Our daughter works for Service Pro Industry. We have four grandchildren, and four grandchildren and one great-grandchild. I run a successful business for over thirty years. I've been on the council for about eight and a half years, resident for about seven months. I'm a lifetime resident of Corden. I have invested interest in Corden. I have worked with the budget and with people. I work with supervisors to maintain streets, sidewalks, also walk the water, and sewer department. This town has some of the lowest utility rates of towns our size, and still maintaining a balanced budget. I'm also on the Corden Planning Zone, Main Street Corden, River Hills Development Board, member of the Corden Christian Church, Sidle Price. I've also inherited Tammy's Fire Department for over twenty years. I would like to continue to serve the council, and cater traffic to make Corden a better place to live and do business. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Mattingly. I have lived in Corden my entire life, except for about four years when I was in the Air Force. And I've lived in a really wonderful town called Grand Forks, North Dakota. Very cold there, very cold. I have been married to my wife Penny for thirty-eight years. We have two children, Shawn and Roxanne. My son Shawn works for the Children's Museum in Indianapolis, and my daughter Roxanne is with UBS. I have two granddaughters, Megan and Caroline, and they are just absolutely the love of my life. I have worked with businesses and have had businesses in Corden most of my life. It's, I remember as a small child, everything was in downtown Corden, and then when I got back from the Air Force, it was like everything had changed. Everything was moving up on top of the hill, and it was a difficult transition for me to see the downtown businesses slowly kind of going away. And I've worked with a lot of those businesses in my current job. I actually work with a lot of them now. I do credit card processing, try to help them, you know, make as much money as they possibly can. And I hear the woes sometimes of, you know, hey, we need some help. So I've always tried to work with businesses and the people in the Corden area would love the opportunity to do some more forum, and I am running for Ward Five, so I would appreciate your vote, and would love the opportunity to serve on the board. Thanks again.
Hello, my name is Rajmukh Ghoram. I currently represent the second ward on the Town Council. I joined the Town Council in the fall of 2009 at the retirement of Rebecca Campbell, who was, had been the second ward representative for several years. I grew up here in Corden, and I've lived in the town since the fall of 1979. I worked downtown from 1971 until the spring of 2000. I team acted with town government in the mid-1980s by serving first on the Ward of Zoning Appeals, and then later I accepted an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've served as Chairperson of the Ward of Zoning Appeals, and I was the Chairperson of the Design Committee when Main Street was organized in the mid-'80s. I resigned those positions in the mid-'90s, when I was enrolled at Purdue University in New Orleans. Shortly after I graduated in 1999, I was asked if I would accept the position on the Ward of Zoning Appeals or Planning and Zoning Commission if it became fiable. And I responded with a yes, and a short time later I was reappointed to BCA, which is where I was serving when I joined the Town Council in 2009. Now, having said all that, throughout all those years of service, I've had to make a lot of decisions regarding the town, and in my head and my heart, I've always voted for Corden.
Hello, I'm Susan McGibbey. I think that quite a few of you in the audience do know me. I'm quite happy to see the turnout. I think that we can get the seats full. I'm not gonna go off any piece of paper. I haven't wrote anything. You know me, know me. You see me on a daily basis, because I am in the community. I have got a long list of what wards I've been on. I've worked through these wards. I've opened a business here, I came back in ninety-six. I'm originally from here, and used to work my roots far. Raised in New Middletown, went to Corden Schools, class eighty-three. I have a concern for the residents, the growth of our town. I had quite good experience in zoning. I'm not a part of zoning. I understand it, worked for a development company out of Louisville based, thinking hospitality, been in hospitality all my life. I've built my business from the ground up. I have restored homes. I have, I have actually been a citizen out there on the street with the community. I hear their concerns, I hear the real people's concerns. I look at the country, I see the concerns, I've taken my blinders off. I'm very interested in helping with housing issues, with assisted living. It's quite needed, we need to, you know, get with the gang and protect our community. I'm not worried about government, I'm not a politician, I'm a little rough around the edges, but I have the experience. Everything in this town and that town hall is learnable. It can be taught to anyone. I'm not concerned, I know these ladies are working really, really hard down there to get this straight for us, and get this updated, get this moving forward. Main Street Corden, the Commerce, we've got some strong people in place that can get this done and move forward. We have children raised, I'm not concerned. I have no idea if this position pays anything, and I'm willing to forfeit it if it does. I'm here for one reason, and that's the residents of this community. I appreciate your vote on Ward Three for Corden, for the residents of this town, for the businesses of this town. They do have a voice, and I appreciate that vote. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Eva Bates North. I will be representing Ward One in January. I'm unopposed in the election, but that doesn't mean that I'm not gonna listen to the people in my board who want to represent you. I'm from Corden, grew up in New Middletown as well, and graduated from Corden Central High School in seventy-three, took off for Ball State, and still wanted to see the world, so I joined the Army and went to Korea. Ended up in Korea, so that's my first time to leave Corden, and then leave the state, and fly out of the country, go to a totally different experience in life. So that started a great, long career with the military. So I ended up all over the place, doing lots of different things, and thirty-two years later, I'm retired sergeant major from the Army. Also, I had another career, which was with the VA, Veterans Affairs. So after I got out of the Army, I started doing clerical work and whatever work I do, but I was smart enough not to quit, so I was able to retire from that at fifty-five years old with over thirty-six years of service. So that brought a lot of experience, a lot of dealing with different people, going up through the ranks, doing different types of construction jobs, cleaning jobs, providing money for hospitals, working with veterans, I've done, you name it, I've done it with the government. So I feel like I've bring some skills to the board, that, you know, hopefully we can all work together and continue what's already been started. It's a wonderful town, and that's why I came back. I love downtown, I love the whole, you know, everything about it, so just think what it's gonna look like in four years. Think what it's gonna look like in one year. That's what I'm excited about. Moving back here, I'm engaged to Richard Ruby. I met him back here, he's from Corden, and we know generations of people. It's so nice to have a familiarity in this town, and we go with that eye, we look at the town and listen to people about their concerns, and we love going downtown. We love walking down there, we love the library park, we like being down in the town. So I'm really, I'm really excited about representing my ward in the town, so hopefully I can add a little plus to what's going on right now.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mark Parks. I'm pleading, I am completing my first term on the Town Council, I represent Ward Four. My wife Susie and I have been married for thirty-six years, and have two adult children and one grandchild, who's a grandson that is years old. I was born and raised in Corden, and I've lived in Corden for fifty-seven years. I have worked in Corden my entire life, and I'm a purchasing agent at Egbert Supply, where I've worked for thirty-nine years. I am a member of the Corden Christian Disciples of Christ, and a former volunteer fireman for the Town of Corden for fifteen years. During my last four years on the Town Council, I've, we have made major improvements in undergrounding, maintaining very low water and sewer rates. We have made upgrades on the wastewater drainage plant. We have continued to upgrade the trash pickup fee by purchasing a new trash compactor truck. We have also continued to update police vehicles by purchasing a four-wheel garage Dodge to rent it on us, the first ever for the Town of Corden to let you on pole of address for the police department. I look forward to continuing my service to the Town of Corden for the next four years, and would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
So I know that's a little unconventional, but it's a little past your course, then we can, you know, when we get past that down. So I know I said we weren't going to entertain any outbursts, but I think all of our candidates did a fantastic job on their introductions, and I think they deserve a round of applause, so. So now we are going to move on to the question portion of this forum, and again, each candidate will have up to sixty seconds. We have our sixty-second final round, all right, to answer each of the questions, and if they get to the stop line that tells them their time is up, they will quickly wrap it up in the few seconds proceeding, and if they don't, I have a big hook that will stop them, so. Not really, but we are going to keep it moving and keep it there, so. Our first question this evening is, "The town candidates, citizens, have spent much of this year planning for the future with a comprehensive plan. What do you think of the plan, and what steps would you take to implement it, so that it does not just become a document that gathers dust on a shelf?"
So I guess to start off the answer, yes, I'm familiar with it, I'm involved in it, I'm on both of the committees for the HCA and also the Comprehensive Plan. The time invested really needs to be taken seriously, and also still needs to be adopted by the plan, by the town, to have it be adopted, but, you know, the progress and priority of our comprehensive plan has to be woven into everything that we do, every priority that we take. It should be made part of our standing agenda, an item that we talk about during every meeting at town hall. Every request or project that comes before our town board needs to be measured against the plan, make sure it supports what we have agreed to, and the priorities for the town would get done, and if it doesn't align to that comprehensive plan, we really need to ask ourselves if we should be investing more time into that particular initiative.
I am familiar with the Comprehensive Plan also, but it has not been completed at this time. We all need to work together with Main Street and business owners in order to finalize this plan.
I've also worked with the Department of HCA, Main Street, Town, and yes, I think most of the planning is good, although it has not been completed yet, so we're not very sure what all is gonna be in it. We need to work together with developers, Main Street, Town, business owners and residents to make these projects work. All the downtown is in the flood zone, so we have to contend with DNR and FEMA on flood ordinance. We have invested our seed money next year to Main Street to help us get developers ideas for businesses, buildings downtown, cattle property, whatever. Getting people to realize the long-term effects of all projects is very important. The biggest question is, who will maintain these projects years, five to ten years from down the road? Thank you.
I've had an opportunity to see a portion of this plan. What I've seen, I think is very good. With any plan, most important part of it though, is to be able to break it down into segments, so that you can evaluate which part of this you need to accomplish in each year as you're developing this plan, and reevaluating as you're going along with the business and people, you know, is this working? Do we need to add some additional things to it? Do we need to throw up some of the things we're gonna do the next year, and go ahead and try to break them in? All that is something that has to be reevaluated as a group, a whole committee would be able to sit down and evaluate and break these things down step by step, but overall, I think the plans are a great way to get started, and I think there's a lot of good ideas in that plan.
It's a good plan, and I've attended several little meetings down there, at least as many as I could, where the pieces and the parts of the plan were discussed. During those meetings, I was kind of quiet, I just didn't get a lot of input, but that was because I wanted to listen to what the people were saying, and find out what was important to them. Now, the Comprehensive Plan, as important a document as it is on its own, is just the first step in the process, and I'm hoping we can take those next steps that will draw the attention of people with the funds and the expertise to make some of those parts of the plan happen.
I happened to read somewhat with my partner here. I've been to the ward meetings, I've seen the Comprehensive Plan, and it's very overwhelming. You're not getting, we're all to the point where we're still looking at it, it's overwhelming, it's overwhelming. The public, there's more to look into. The public, if we're looking at it this way, the public's gonna look at some big, oh, idea that, oh, it can't happen, it can happen. That it can be a reality, it's not an idea. I'm already seeing it. This is why I'm so interested in getting with these people that are in place, to put this together. I've seen plans in the past fail, go, people go. This is achievable. We have to stiff their neck out there, and we have to work together as a community, get these roots together, and with this plan, be serious about it. One thing in this plan is gonna lead to the next. Don't let it overwhelm you. I'm still learning, I'm still looking at it, but we're gonna take one step at a time, and it's got to move, and I'm willing to open up and be with my teams.
I think the most impressive thing that I've seen about the plan is going to the meetings where citizens were invited, just to say, this is what we want you to do, this is not what you're gonna do, you know, you don't plan what you're doing, we want you to do this. And it was very consistent. I think I went to most of the ward meetings. The consistency of what people are requesting is, is not complicated, it's something that they should expect, so it's very durable. By action plan, by putting on the regular agenda where people can come and watch to see if it happens, and it's very durable.
I think the Comprehensive Plan is good. It could be good if you've got the funds to fund it. If you don't, you have to step back and look at something different, but since the downtown area is entirely impounded, a lot of it is in the flood, like, only certain projects can be completed due to the flood waters. The town is accountable to FEMA and DNR, so we have to put what they're saying to us, it's not just the town. The town's, the town, Main Street developers, business owners, and residents will need to work together to implement this plan and see that it can come true like what we all like.
All right, our second question. What is your personal vision for the future of Corden, and what role do you believe county, economic development, income taxes, and riverboat gaining revenues play in achieving that vision?
I'd like to see the person who thought that that could be answered in sixty seconds. We, we can definitely utilize those funds. It's not atypical for municipalities to use those funds for infrastructure repairs and things like that. I'd like to see us get to the point where we're not dependent upon riverboat funds. If we can grow our town properly and responsibly, I don't think that the riverboat is gonna even be an issue. It's nice to have those funds to be able to utilize, but we shouldn't depend on them forever. The seed funds are for economic development, I think we're making great strides to get Main Street on board to help us be that economic development arm within our community, so we'll see how that works out, and what they're able to accomplish, and we're really excited about having them on board with the town.
If the money is available and can be used for particular projects in the defense downtown, this can be of good use in helping tourism and making the town a better place to visit.
My ambition is to keep the historic aspect of downtown, and still get some businesses in town. We could possibly use some of the money for possible grant money for two businesses to update their properties, keep them updated, whatever, and again, we've invested our seed money next year, up to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars next year for Main Street as our economic development people, and hopefully with our approval, we'll try to get what needs to be done.
I believe with the proper funds, that we can certainly have continued business growth. I think that new businesses in new areas of downtown can be developed, so that additional businesses, restaurants, and things like this can come into town, which will help draw more people to not only stay in town, to shop and eat, but will draw people from the surrounding areas and our tourism that we try to work with, will give them a better opportunity to have more places to shop, more places to eat, and more reasons to come back and visit historic downtown Corden.
My vision for Corden is this. Corden becomes a place where everyone wants and my needs are met, now and today. And I don't mean that to sound self-centered, but that, I mean, you know, I don't wanna, you know, I think that I'm kind of a representative, or at least there are a lot of people that live in town that are, that are like me. We don't wanna have to drive to Louisville to get the things that we want or need to be entertained, other than for, you know, college or pro sports. So, you know, I want people to buy my clothes here. If I want to take my lawn chair and our future grandchildren to the park and see an outdoor movie. If I want to take my lawn chair and our future grandchildren to the park and see an outdoor movie, I want to do that here. I want to buy my wife's anniversary present here. If she and I want to go out on a Saturday night and hear some good bluegrass or classic rock music or some good live jazz music, I want to be able to do that here. Seed and the riverboat funds are just two of the tools that can be used to make some of that happen.
I am in agreement with my little partner here. You can hear his heart and his soul in this town. That's the tip. I'm not looking at the riverboat gaining money right now. I don't depend on this. If we bring this community together, you would be surprised what we could do. The town of Corden was built by a lot of these people in Harrison County. They're a part of our town. This is their town. There's a lot of the ideas out there. Communities can come together, people can come together. And when the outsiders see this, the people that have that money, that want to bring their business here, they will come. But as long as we can pull our little teams together and step up and see life here, we're going to live with it. And we are, it is very important to us to be able to move forward in this town. And it's going to take the people. That's why I, I don't care about nothing right now with these people, because it's going to take all of us. Thank you.
My vision for Corden is for people who live in Corden to be able to say my vision of Corden. I want, you know, vibrancy. Families downtown doing things. Nothing, I mean, nothing elaborate, just enjoying that. Seeing people they know. And I think my vision is what the people feel that we should go toward. So hopefully, we can always listen. I mean, comprehensive plan means that you're going to be inputting for the rest of your life if you live here. So, you know, the vibrancy is going to be built by the people, and hopefully, we can help implement that. This money, you know, funding is identified for a certain project and we've prioritized it, then we can fund it something, we can have something downtown that people want to go and visit or buy or whatever. So I think vibrancy is the vision.
I would like to see the town of Corden grow with Irish more than anybody up here. I would like to see a wide variety of businesses be drawn to people in the downtown area. Seed money this, this next year has been invested with Main Street for economic development. And I also think that it is important that the historical elements of the town of Corden be preserved because that's all that Corden really has to draw at this time is the historic part to get people here, for one thing, and then you have to build from that.
Working on my 10,000 step show. All right. Question number three. Corden benefits from several outdoor public spaces maintained by county and state government and other organizations. Do you believe these existing spaces meet the town's needs for parks and green space? Or should the town itself create and maintain additional parks and green space?
In a word, no. I don't think that what we have meets our town needs. In the board meetings, we heard from many of our, our town residents that they felt that green space was something that they wanted more of. They want parks or even spaces that their families can come and congregate in with others within the community. We have some great parks. These is what is, is a gorgeous part of parks in our department, you know, phenomenal job. But we need things that are a little closer that people can congregate in and become a closer, tight-knit community. We can, I think Corden has the opportunity to leverage some of the smaller green spaces that create those parks for our families to play and stay in. Families need recreation areas, places within walking distance that they can take their kids to play, have fun, and to connect with others within the community.
Due to the workload of all town employees who do a wonderful job for the town, I think it would be too much to create and maintain green space unless we could make it as maintenance-free as possible.
I would be in favor of small green space in downtown as long as the live out and security could be done, played easy enough. A good place for people to go relax, eat some lunch, just meet, talk to different people if they wish, just rest. That would be good, although very few people use the square now, and it's open all the time after the end of the destruction, or destruction. Thank you.
We are a very fortunate community to have parks and the state forests that's so close to us to be able to go and do things. And there are several camping facilities, all within just minutes of our area. So we're very fortunate to have that already. The downtown, even though we have the courtyard that is now being turned to concrete, I think it would be nice to utilize a couple of the smaller areas that I think could be developed just for recreational use for the people that are, that live in town. I really think that that's going to be something that would be used a lot more if it was set up correctly.
The county parks are great, and by the way, happy birthday to the county park system. O'Bannon Woods and the state forest are a couple of jewels in the state park system. But that said, I don't want to see a town parks for lunch if I can't hardly put up words. And I'm probably going to get in trouble here for saying this out loud, and I've not said a whole lot about it, but I want Bryce Island to be the site of that park. That's it. There are a ton of physical challenges to overcome to make that happen, and it'll take some really creative engineering to overcome some of those challenges because after all, it's a, is an island for Pete's sakes, but how many towns have an island? So those things just made me want to go to one.
I think that in an hour, just going to move in some. She can come too. I love everybody. Yes, I agree totally. We need green space. I keep hearing this word, money. I'll say it again, community is amazing. I've seen the volunteers and garden youth. I've seen them all over town myself. I pick weeds up and plant them. It all always take money. It takes pride. It takes morals. It takes community. And I'm here to tell you, it can happen. I believe we're going to have some green space. If we have anything to do with it for our people.
When we had the board meetings, there was a lot of talk about that. There, you know, when you go downtown, I've talked to younger families and they're, they go downtown to eat or whatever, to hang out down there, and then what do you do? So you could go to the market and then connect it with a space, you know, walking space, and then go to Bryce Island and sit on a, sit on a beach and, you know, enjoy it, enjoy the family. And I think that we have great parks, but we need city parks. We need parks close to us where we can walk. We don't have to drive for 10 minutes. I mean, we can walk there and sit and enjoy it. So I do think we need green space here.
I believe it would be a good idea for Corden to have a park in more green space. When you come over the north hill on the north bridge, when you're looking over to the right, the Cala property really looks awful. It's railroad, it's got railroad cars setting in it. Why couldn't you put something like a Mini Hayeswood Park setting in that atmosphere as you come up to that bridge, and that's the first thing that you're going to see coming to Corden? A dog park can be put there as well, which is picnic tables and shelter house. And I do think we need green spaces in Corden. And possibly maybe something over on the old parking lot, over around the laundry house. Something over there to unify that more, because that is a mess over there also.
Did you ever wonder if we can upload 10,000 steps? Many towns in Indiana hire professional town managers who report to the elected town board. Do you think it would be a good idea for Corden? Or do you support the decision to continue to elect one member of the town board to act as the manager?
I did a little research on this to answer this effectively, but in my opinion, from what I've read, those should be two entirely different roles. President of the council has a particular role to achieve behind that table, and the town manager has a central role that reports to the town council. And we do have state laws against one person filling all of those roles. I believe we'd be more successful placing an ad for a town manager and hire an individual that actually is qualified to, to fill that position. Somebody who's trained and educated in that, in that role. Anyone can apply, of course, but I believe the most qualified person should fill that position. We really need a person who will partner with the council that would help take Corden to the future.
I don't see any reason for making the change. It has worked many years with no problems. A town manager could be a heavy extra cost to the town.
Of course, everybody knows that I don't want to say the uptown president. Personally, I think what we have is good. We are one of the few towns, I'm trying to say, the law says we cannot do this, but we are one of the few towns in Corden that can do this legally, what we're doing. Not to say, why pay someone more money for what we're giving right now? A manager can live anywhere, even if they have to live in town. He does, he may not know much about Corden or Corden. Supervisors know how to get their jobs done and how to do it efficiently. The board still makes the final decisions on the large expenditures.
It's not that our town council and our leadership isn't accomplishing things that need to be done, but sometimes having a complete outside person. So when somebody has put together this plan, you say, okay, now you got to make this happen. As a complete outside source, and that is their total responsibility and job to get that done and then to report back to the group that has made this. Sometimes that's what it takes to maybe overcome some of the difficulties. And as we're working on these comprehensive plans and trying to develop a park area, it may take someone with a little more outside look that we can call on and hold responsible in a different way than we would if it was just one of our members. So I feel that it would probably be a good idea.
And I believe this is something that really should be very, very, very carefully considered. We need to gather as much information as we can. We need to talk with some people and do some research, and then make a decision on what's best for the town and the town employees.
I agree. I am leaning towards yes. I believe we need a town manager. Hire him. I know that it's kind of scary to the public, but that's what I've been doing this week. That my question to a lot of people out here in our community. Yes, it's all yeses. So I'm speaking for the people. I'm not speaking necessarily for myself. I'm here to make sure that this town is safe. I'm sure that there will be things like, you know, why don't let somebody just come here and take over? There'll be things in place. These people can be replaced also. But I do believe that it would be a good idea to have a town manager that's doing the town management job.
Well, I really don't know too much about that, but I don't want to jump to conclusions either. I've looked at it, and the first when I read that, I thought, yeah, I need a town manager. There's a lot to look at. If you look at salaries and qualifications of people, if you have a salary in a certain range, do you want that type person as a town manager? So there's a lot of things to look at, salary, education, those kind of things. What are you looking for? So I think that's something the board would probably research first before I make any decision anyway.
I support the decision that we currently now have, and that is for one member of the town council to be elected to act, to act as town manager. This ensures the manager and a resident of Corden and has a genuine interest and commitment to the well-being of the town. A town manager does not have to be a Corden resident. The system enforced now is effective and utilizes a fair majority vote.
So we're halfway through our questions. Question number five. The town of Corden has added an unsafe building ordinance and an unsafe building fund passed on June 1st of 2017. Has this ever been utilized, or would you be willing to utilize it? And do you believe that this could be used to encourage business owners to invest in bringing their buildings back to current building codes? Or would the ordinance need to be amended to ensure the safety of town visitors, residents, and business owners?
So I think we could all pretty much agree that the current condition of several of the businesses or buildings downtown area, the ordinance is fairly ineffective or is not being enforced, either in housing or enforcement, let me clarify. I've read the ordinance appears to be written well a bit, you know, about an attorney or... This isn't about finding people. This is about communicating with the people in our community, and it has to start with that. We have to be having conversations with the building owners, with the building, with the business owners as well before we even think about pulling out some document out of the, out of an archive and saying, writing them a letter and saying, you're in violation of this. We have to be starting to think about ourselves as a community, and we need to have conversations with those individuals and work together to have our community look like what we want it to look like.
The town council at this time does not have an experienced inspector to tell us if a building is unsafe or not. Right now, it has to come from a fire marshal or a health department member to advise in this matter. It's a hard thing to dictate people's personal living habits.
The unsafe building fund in this ordinance was put in, it was put into the ordinance, but it was never set up, to my knowledge, or to the park treasures. We've never did anything with it for whatever reason back when. We have used the ordinance one time, and it worked. Worked good. I would be in favor of using it again when, when, when it is needed, which it is needed. I have to agree on certain things. But to do that, we need, like you said, the health department, a building inspector, which the county does not even have to do it back this time. They expect new, not the old one like this, or the, or the fire marshal. And if this building looks unsafe to us, doesn't mean that it can be, if it is, and these people can make the decision as far as, and then we can move forward to here with the problem.
The unsafe building ordinance, I haven't actually seen it. I don't know how it's written, and I think that it needs to be, you know, evaluated and make sure that it does have teeth so that if and when you have the proper inspectors in place to go out... so that if and when you have proper inspectors in place to go out and say, "Yes, we have problems, we need to be able to take care of it." But before that ever happens, communication has got to be the number one thing. We've got to be able to go out and talk with anybody who is, who we feel maybe is in violation or is not keeping up their building to where we think it maybe needs to be, even outside of areas, but even more so with the inside. There are a lot of people who are living in some spaces above some of these buildings that, honestly, I don't see why those buildings haven't come to the ground already. So we need to get inspectors, we need to have people that can look at these, and we need to have ordinance in place. I don't recall that the unsafe building ordinance has been used since I've been a member of the town council. Now, there was one instance where I believe that it could have been applied, but the council instead invited the owner to a meeting, to the town council meeting, and we just openly discussed the condition of the building, what his plans were for the building. And the owner did admit that the project was much bigger than he ever anticipated, and he was out of money and couldn't do anything else. And he agreed to sell the building. And the building has essentially sold and improved and stabilized. I believe it's better to talk to the building owners and ask them to consider particular repairs rather than to take the violation. Now, the emergency situation, on the other hand, that part is something different.
We're touching on a topic now that I haven't been digging deep into. That's where I've been, I haven't been home, writing things down or anything else. So we also need to worry about housing. Some of the housing, some of the conditions of our residents women, not just buildings. We can beautify our historic town hall in one. These buildings are crumbling. I don't think that, you know, where does the talking come in? Yes, we have some businesses down here that we can talk to right now. It's not going to be an easy, soft move. We have to get inspectors. We have to find a way to get this done. Not, it's not that difficult. That's the reason why I'm running for this position. Because I know, I know a lot about the housing in the area. I know the health department has been in roadblocks. They have laws in place. The conditions are horrible. You see it with your own eyes. It's gone beyond that. So something has to be done. I don't know about the ordinance, obviously, it hasn't been used.
Since moving back here, I've tried to wrap my head around why someone owns a building that they don't maintain. Where is their responsibility? I don't think a fund needs to be set up for someone who owns a building. They put their own money into it, right, to improve it? So, you know, there are buildings downtown that people own. So where are these people and what have they done to improve these areas? That is a responsibility on this person. I mean, I don't know about enforcement and all that, but I think the conscience, like, you know, we were talking about improving the town, somebody needs to feel guilty about letting that happen in the middle of our town. So I just call, you know, we need to call on the responsibility of the owner of that building. And there are, you know, some people own a lot of them.
First thing I'd like to throw out, the town of Corden didn't look like this the whole time. Guess my generation here, you probably don't realize that Blaine Wyssman was a big part of changing Corden back in the days. That's why you've got buildings down there that look good, and then you've got some buildings that he didn't deal with, so they don't look as good. So I just kind of want to throw that out for the late Blaine Wyssman. We need some other people like that, you know, around Corden to help out. But anyway, the unsafe building ordinance has been utilized once. The building inspector only inspects new structures. A building has to be declared unsafe by the fire marshal or the health department. This ordinance could be exercised, again, if need be.
Okay, question number six. What do you think about annexing some of the areas that are already served by Corden and what are the insular?
You mean to do that? Oh, sorry, that was my attempt at humor. I think annexation is critical to the growth and progress of our town. We already actually invested in a plan back in 2007 that isn't, that had a strategy written down for the town that hasn't been implemented. So I'm hoping that when we implement this next one, that we actually do something with it. We lost the two mile fringe to the county because we didn't do anything with the annexation at that time. We lost the town square to the state because we didn't want to maintain it or for whatever reason. We can't, we have to grow, folks. And, you know, I'm not talking about spending money here. I'm talking about investing in the future of our town. And if we're unwilling to do that, we gotta move somewhere else because it's a place that'd dry up and blow away if we don't.
There would probably be more residents that would be for it than against it. Before I can make a final decision, I would like to have a study of the advantages and disadvantages for the areas that would be considered for annexation.
I would be for annexing some areas. I'd like a feasibility study first. I don't see why we would want to annex something if it's not monetary. In other words, don't spend, don't spend money to get something, get something that you're not spending money on. But I would be in favor of some to get the town squared up, while we do need it to survive properly. But I'd like to make that a feasibility study first, to make sure we can maintain a level service to the annexed areas compared to the current services and limitations provided to our residents now.
Yes, I believe that annexing the areas that we already are servicing would be important for the growth of our community. We certainly need to make sure that we look at it and understand exactly the process we need to go through and who is going to be involved and how it's going to be done. But our town needs to grow. And that is certainly something that we've already invested money in. So we should take advantage of utilizing that and making it part of our community. I'm not opposed to annexation, but annexation needs to satisfy three criteria, I believe. When you annex an area, it needs to give the value for the money being spent on additional taxes to those that are being annexed. And by that, I mean people paying additional property taxes, they need to get something for their money. And I believe we can do that. It should have a financially positive impact for the town. And the town should be able to maintain the same quality of service to the larger area as it do to the smaller area. Now, in this case, I don't believe that we can stand back and say, "Well, two out of three is a bad." It needs to satisfy all three criteria.
Annexing, very first thing that we're going to have to do is get this to our residents and our public. Because annexing is a very, very, very difficult thing. It's time consuming, but we have to start talking about it now. I do believe that a lot of areas do need to be annexed. But the majority of the residents haven't said so on this. There's a lot of complications with the water, the electric, the R and D. There's a lot of things that go along with this. I need to be more educated on it myself. There's going to be a lot of bills going in, and it fell on annexing. It's a hard road, but we have to start now and look at it. Are we are going to lose this town? This town, it'll be in the dust, John.
I agree that there should be a feasibility study because it is complicated and it's also very emotional for a lot of people. However, if you ever looked at the border of the town, it may cost more to give the services to the different places because it's a zigzag. I don't know how they do it. I don't know how they think the water, the, all the services are known where they're going to do the services because the borders are very complicated and don't make sense. So I think, first of all, just do something that makes sense. Yeah, it's very jagged, so that really needs to be looked at.
Annexation is something that is definitely worth looking into very deeply. I believe, just like some of the other people, it's hard to say something different here. A feasibility study should be done to determine if annexation would benefit the town because there's certain things annexation, I think John maybe touched on it or somebody down the incline there, that you might support with water and sewer and everything. And then you have to pick up half a dozen homes, and then you're supporting, then you've got to put trash in there, and it's a very expensive thing to do. So you've really got to have a feasibility study to make sure that the income is outweighing what it's cost.
All right, question number seven. What are your thoughts on modernizing town hall? For example, how do you feel about a town website?
A town website's kind of a no-brainer. That's a communication tool that you should be using a decade ago. But let's talk about the building itself. It's really cool looking. It's a cute building. We're outgrowing it. I've been in there at any number of times. It's a small space for people to be able to work effectively in. And we've been talking about a lot of different things today. This is probably not really, modernizing town halls is probably not really high on the priority list. But, you know, thinking into the future, as we hope we're doing, I'd see maybe that turn into our police station and move the folks in town hall into a nicer, bigger building at some point. Definitely something to consider. A website just needs to go up yesterday.
We are in the process of updating our systems at the moment. And I also think a website would be good. Some people who are going to visit can get information on our town.
So yes, we do need to update, we need to get into this century. We're already working on this, though. We've bought a new computer software for the water department in the building. We hired an IT person. We now take credit cards and automatic check payment, which we've never done before, for the, helping the, our customers or our water and sewer. We're working on a new phone system, answering capabilities, and you can hold somebody after hours, emergencies, without knowing who to, so you know who to call. We're working on a website, trying to be where you pay your bills electronically. Building size, it is a little small, but we're still a small town.
The town website, yes, it's something that we need so we have access and you can look up information. Just hearing John talk about the things we're already doing, I think that's, that's very, certain things that needed to be in place probably, you know, ten years ago when everybody else was doing these things. So I'm glad to see that we are finally coming around to that. As far as the size of the building, I think as we continue to develop our downtown area and if we go forward with some of the annexations that we're looking, that possibly do, I think there's going to be a need for some additional space. And we can take a really strong look in the future at a couple of the areas that we want to develop anyway. And this would be a great place to be able to put a larger town hall or better meetings and everything, somewhere in the future. We have just spent several thousand dollars on new computers and software and training to help the staff do their jobs better and easier. A town website has been one of my personal goals for 2015. I'm hoping that when it happens, it will have features that will enable people to, like John said, pay water and sewer bills online, see a schedule of events, trash pickup schedule. Another cool thing would be, and even people assigned under text messaging, they'll know when, they can be texted when the hydrants are being flushed. And maybe even have contact information for town council members.
And this question to me is a no-brainer. All the things that we're talking about here is building this community, bringing the people in. What does that consist of? We have to have a town hall. When we get these residents to be a part of this, it's going to fit them all in there. I mean, this is a no-brainer. Yes, we need to update our town hall. These ladies have been working really hard over the last year. I can see the difference in what they've done in that office. That, that will be part of our history. We've had a lot going on there. We need a space for our community to come. If we're building the town, we have to have a larger town hall. Simple as that.
Yeah, I agree that we should update and modernize and all that. Also, one really very important thing is that we need our faces out there to say, "We're here, we're going to help you, we don't need to, you know, be on the computer. We need to talk to you and listen to your concerns." And if that means a bigger town hall, if more people would come to request things, it's a natural step in the process of revitalizing.
I believe the town hall is adequate and serves the function for which it's intended. I do believe maybe down the road, possibly, we might need a larger town hall. But for the time being, I don't see purpose in spending the money when we need money elsewhere. Upgrades and services have been done. Water bills can be paid by debit credit cards now. Our website for paying bills will be a great thing, I'm with Buck on that, online, be considered at this time also. And a town website is, it just is a must. It has to be. We've done about two years.
Question number eight. Several streets and roads are in need of repair in the town. What are your thoughts on creating a plan that prioritizes and creates a schedule to repair and upgrade? Should or does each town board member be required to submit a list of streets in their ward?
Is that two minutes? Because that's two questions there. Lisa, I'm kind of confused there. So yeah, I think our town is probably doing a pretty adequate job. We, in fact, we just got a bunch of streets in town paved up to, maybe within the last couple of weeks, at least up in my neighborhood, so it looks well. But, you know, to really address the communication, opening the communication line between the different board members, I think that's, you know, that's something that we should not, as board members, be sitting behind a desk. We should be out talking to people in our neighborhoods and listening to them and poking at them and saying, "What do you like? What don't you like? What do you see as needs in our community?" And then we take that information back to the town board and we have those conversations. I would love to see that place packed out on every other Monday. I mean, it's pretty sparse. It's hard to envision a whole lot of people that really care when you don't see anybody at our town hall meetings. So I would just put that out as maybe a challenge to y'all. Come out and see what happens behind the desk. I think you might be surprised.
Our supervisors drive the streets every day and bring a proposal each year for certain streets to be repaid. The list of streets this year has recently been done.
First of all, I'd like to know what streets within the town limits are in bad shape. I get out almost every day, drive around, and there is some, but some of them are not in the town limits. Again, I'm taking that on that. Our district superintendent has a plan already, almost a year in advance of what streets are, need to be done. Every year, we check all the streets and do the work as needed. Every year, we check all the streets and do the work as is needed. We also listen to our residents, our business owners, along with the council members on empty complaint. People should tell me or the town hall, if they have something that they think needs attention, uh, we'll try to take care of it. We use approximately a hundred, we use a rough thousand times, and that's called every year, for street repair.
Uh, I feel that the repair that's been done recently on all the roads, the already being done, has really been great. I love the fact that there's a lot of fresh whiteout out there. Uh, more so, it's really kind of what Sean said. I would like to see us open up more communication with the people that are in our wards, so that any things that they see or think about that they would like to have brought to attention, you know, call me, talk to me, tell me what those things are, so that I can in turn bring those up at the meetings and they can be discussed. It's not so much just streets, but it's anything in general. Without communication and hearing what other people have to say, we're never going to know. It's just my opinion from what I see, and it really is the community and all the people out there that we need to be able to talk to. As others have said, uh, here since, years since I've been a member of the council, we deal with this in about midsummer, uh, streets that, uh, that need repair or repaid as recommended by our, uh, street art supervisor, who by the way, has probably forgotten more about asphalt maintenance than I ever know. But when we get that list, we have the opportunity, we go out, we can drive the streets, and if we've got a question about a particular street, we do that for, and we provide feedback to him as well. Now, if we see something that needs attention, uh, we certainly bring that up at council meetings, too. Uh, the alley between Mulberry Street and Hill Street alongside the Methodist Church is an example, uh, with the relocation of Zerelman Arc Glass to the corner of Chesterton and Mulberry, you know, and the, uh, and the town square being so close to each other, we thought that that alley was probably going to be a lot more auto and foot traffic, uh, next spring when the school groups come through here. So that's just one of the things that, uh, that we do with the, uh, through, just getting started.
Um, well, this question is the requirement, the word required. If you elect me as your ward three, you, I'm not required to go get a list of streets. I'm very perceptive. I may get to it before the superintendent gets to it. Matter of fact, I've worked, I've done quite a bit. Um, I don't think that should be a requirement. I think it should be an automatic, we all should be concerned on this board when we drive these streets every day. I don't need somebody to tell me when a street needs to be repaired. I can make the list myself. Um, they are doing a good job, but I also, as a resident, when I look at it and I'm driving downtown, I also know that we've got a birthday coming. I wish we'd have a birthday every year, because they are, this, this is starting to shake up, doesn't it? Um, so I don't think that it should be required. I think that's automatic as a board member and a resident in this town.
Well, I was kind of surprised with this question. I really think the response to street repair in Corden is excellent. Excellent, uh, to beyond that. Um, I've seen a hole in the street and the next day it's patched, and it falls down, they come back the next day and they build it up. And, uh, there are probably some areas that I've seen on a couple of hills that probably need a little safer shoulder or something that could be looked at. Like in my ward, there's a, there's a hill going up towards the school that was a little dangerous to me, and I'm scared going up there, but, um, I think the response is excellent. I also think our eyes won't add to that, so.
The town has a street superintendent that assesses the streets for needed repairs. He does a superb job and makes out his schedule for street repairs yearly. Anyone concerned about a particular street is more than welcome to contact me with the name of the street and the complaint, and I will bring it to the attention of the town council. And again, I think our guy at the town superintendent is excellent. There's no way anybody could baden out of it.
All right, so question number nine is like four questions in one, so I'm going to restate it a little bit to make it one. In supporting tourism, what would you do to encourage downtown businesses to do differently? And what changes, if any, would you make to local ordinances to help businesses attract more customers?
Well, that sounds a lot better than the last question you said to us. And since we responded to it first, I'm going to have to try to readjust my answer, starting again. Okay. Uh, so yeah, we all support tourism. I don't think any of us don't. Our, our history is rich. The town hall, uh, is beginning to partner with, uh, folks like Main Street, and we need to do, uh, more with Visitors Bureau, the Historical Society, just to name a few. Um, bottom line really is, this is a team solution. Um, the town hall has to partner with the businesses to make this a success. Yeah, uh, let, let them know that they have a voice. Um, our, our businesses here are, are extremely important to the growth of our community, and, uh, and we have to increase the, the communication with those folks. Our restrictive sign ordinance comes to mind as an example of something that's not very, yeah, too bad.
And I do support tourism also. New businesses who come seem to leave after a short while, because maybe the rent being too much of a burden for them to bear. If each business owner could come up with a unique way of presenting their business, it might make a difference.
I, I do support tourism. Uh, to be totally honest, I really don't know what to do to make people come, uh, because you need to work with the Downtown Merch Association, Visitors Bureau, uh, about anybody that has a suggestion. Uh, they're already trying a number of things, they've extended their, all their hours, uh, they're trying to, trying to do a few things. Uh, as far as the ordinance, I don't think changing an ordinance is the answer to everything.
I personally have, uh, a business in this town, and, um, it's, it's very, very difficult to survive, even on a good year, and we do have tourism. Tourism is the lifeblood of what's going to keep our businesses in downtown alive. There are a lot of ways that we can help drive things. There needs to be, uh, a lot more events that drive people into our town, uh, better signage, uh, making sure that all of our buildings are, you know, safe and conducted well, and offering the opportunities to be able to do things in that downtown area by closing off a street or several streets on different occasions to be able to have events. That's a great way to be able to draw in those tourists. They, they come to those things, they come into those events, and then they come back to the shop. And, uh, working with our store owners, I think we can, uh, develop a very good plan to be able to bring a lot of additional tourism to Portland. Well, yes, I absolutely support tourism, uh, and, but I can't think of anything for the businesses to do differently than what they're already doing. The expanded hours are a great thing. Um, the, uh, Bluegrass on the Square, um, the car show that's soon coming up, you know, those are all great things. One thing possibly might be a, uh, some sort of annual festival. Uh, I know we had one several years ago. We had one when he and Chris and I and Mark were kids. But, uh, but like I said, but like John said, I don't see how passing board laws is really going to make it more attractive for people. Very soon, my wife and I are going to be taking a trip to Chesterton, Indiana, and to see Indiana dunes. We're going because we want to see the dunes and we want to visit the city, and we're not going because they've passed some ordinances that somehow made it more attractive.
Um, yes, of course, I, uh, support tourism, and tourism is here. I live by the constitutional law. I see probably, I can count all day long, I talk to people from out of state all the time. It's not the tourism, the people come here, they don't stay. Sign ordinance really has nothing to do with that, and it's not their concern. I think that with this plan that we have, and question number one, that Main Street and Commerce and everybody's going together, it's more of a plan for our community, and once the tourists see what we're doing with our community, they will be more than happy to come back and stay. But the businesses we have right now, Perry Zimmerman, Java, uh, the jewelers, people that have tucked it out down there, they're spending their own money, their own time. I'm seeing the people step up. They know what to do, but we have to get behind them on this. I opened a business here also at one time. I have no idea about the sign ordinance. I am dying to find out about the sign ordinance. I put a sign up, but I never looked at the sign ordinance.
Yes, uh, tourism is probably our major industry. One thing that I think the businesses, businesses could do, because we've had visitors here before, and they had a hard time finding a souvenir of the first take capital, we're the only one. So where's our souvenir store that you can buy a trinket or something valuable? I mean, go to Nashville, Tennessee, or go to a town that tourists go to, and you go to this store and buy from an upper level of product to keychain up in, or whatever, because the visitors who came from out of country to visit here this summer, they couldn't find, they wanted a megam for the refrigerator, it's difficult for us to find. I think, uh, Bud Drugs has a great, um, advertising thing and the souvenirs that go with it. Convenience Store has Coryon T-shirts, if no one knows that. I think those kinds of things, we need more, you can't find them in town.
I also support tourism. I served, uh, I served on the town council when Corden became a mainstream community. One entrance to local business success is rent that is unaffordable. I had it personal, but actually, it's my mother that has worked in the town of Corden quite a few years, and she has seen rent go up and up and up. And one of the businesses that she worked at, it went from fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. And that's something these companies have got to pull out of the top, whatever they're making. So think about that, fifteen hundred to two thousand, this one company was charging for rent. Support from the public and private investors would be very beneficial. The support has been received in the past years.
All right, we are on our final question. Are you familiar with the Hometown Collaborative Initiative taking place in Corden? And what do you think of the process and the project they have identified as their capstone?
I'm with that committee, and I'm pretty excited about what they've been able to accomplish due to cooperation of the community, and that's really what I think I like the best, like best about the process, um, is making sure that the community has had opportunity to be heard and has a continual, uh, open door of conversation, uh, to be involved in that feedback process. Um, we're still, uh, working on that. The capstone activity is going to be one that I think that will show the community, that will serious about the grant and revitalization of Corden, and it's fully the rug, meaning the rug. Um, and everyone has, uh, has had, uh, that wanted to participate, I think, has had an opportunity to make it that reality. I believe the project will be the catalyst for any more initiatives in the community, um, but we've done it as a, as a community, and it hasn't been any one person's, uh, work. That's what I like most about it.
It would be nice if HCI members could come to our council meeting to present their thoughts, so we could take them under advisement. A lot of people working together can bring forth some good ideas.
I'll be honest, I don't know a lot about the capstone. Uh, I should, I agree, uh, with all the other things going on, other meetings and other things I have to attend, uh, I could not attend meetings like I should have. Uh, actually, one of the other questions, I would be in favor of some green space, and I think what they've got, from what I understand, what they've got going, I think would be some good improvements, as long as they can be maintained properly, but I would need more information before I can really say a whole lot about it.
Honestly, I have no idea what the Hometown Collaborative Initiative is. I haven't seen it, I haven't heard anything about it. I hope that, uh, in the future, I'll have opportunities to speak, uh, more involved with that and more of what it is, and be a, uh, an activist in it, and find out, you know, what we're going to be able to do, and hopefully it'll be successful. Well, I'm always somewhat familiar with the Hometown Collaborative Initiative. Uh, I've been copying on a few emails, uh, but I'm not able to, to attend any of your meetings during the day, and it's difficult to get off work to do that. I have read some of the, uh, mess of the meetings on the Oprah website, and, uh, but most of all, I'm really encouraged that a, a somewhat diverse group of people can get together and work toward a goal. And I think that's great practice for some things that may light ahead of us as a community.
Um, I'm all for it, uh, to be honest. I don't know a lot about it either. I get bits and pieces. I hear Sean get excited every once in a while about some things, but that's the whole idea. I want some people, it's, it's those people come in and get together and have this proof. And as long as Sean Bates is involved in this process, we're going to hear a lot more about it. Um, I'm going to probably be on that bandwagon as long as it's, um, with the residents. I, I, you know, I've heard the thing, I'm happy to look more into it and, uh, through this or something to that effect. Um, these are the people coming together, and I think that they all have a big concern of the cost of anything in this town. They have a lot of people that volunteer their time. I, I don't think that it's something that's going to be looked at and have walls put on or anything else. This is our citizens that's came together with this plan, and I'm, I'm excited to find out more about it and be involved with it.
I've been, uh, becoming familiar with the Hometown Collaborative Initiative recently, and, um, it's an education in building a community, in the connectivity of that community, like, how do we walk there? What do the lights look like? Is it safe? Is it secure? Is it all that? And, um, it's, it's kind of like, well, it's cool. I mean, on the board, I think that we have a responsibility to learn, um, is our town livable? Is it a livable space? And that is what causes people not to live somewhere, is that it's not connected, it's not, uh, good food or whatever you want, you know, it's those things that you're looking for. And those businesses and, um, places of recreation, they need to be there so that people can utilize them, to make it livable space, and I think that's what HCI is mainly about. And, uh, the initiative is coming out.
At this point, um, I'm not familiar enough with HCI capstone to speak on the project. I would need to know more about the project before I get caught out. The HCI, I'd like to see HCI approach the town council at their regular monthly meetings and maybe let us, tell us about what is going on and what is in the future that they're looking at.
All right, I'd like to thank everybody for attending this evening. And special thanks to South Harrison Community School Corporation for letting us use their auditorium, and, um, I'm not sure if Daniel is still here. He saw us with the sound and the lights today. I see, oh yes, he's flipping the lights up there, so he is still here, he just wanted to wait that for a minute. So thank you for all of your assistance this evening. So thank you for all of your assistance this evening. Either Rhonda, my assistant, or I really knew how to do any of this technical stuff. So Daniel gave up his evening to come help us out. So again, thank you all for being here. Thank you for being so respectful and supportive. And most of all, thank you to our candidates. I think our voters are gonna have a very difficult time come November 3rd, choosing five of you. So we thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules. And again, just thanks for joining the Chamber of Commerce and Harrison County for our first candidate forum. And have a good one.